Our next debate is for the City of Bellingham, City Council Ward 5 position. And there are two candidates on the ballot for this race, Lisa Anderson and Hanan Suarez. Welcome. And here's the description of that position. The City of Bellingham Council is the legislative body for the city, responsible for setting public policies, adopting long-range plans, approving the budget and taxes, and passing laws. Council members are engaged in the community and responsive to constituent concerns. The Council Ward 5 term of office is four years with an annual salary of $27,132. Candidates ready?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Suarez.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name's Hanan Suarez, and I'm running for Bellingham City Council Ward 5. Ultimately, I'm here to represent the people. I've been canvassing since May, and I've had the privilege to talk to my neighbors. And what I've been hearing repeatedly is that the situation for working-class people, middle-class people, is getting tenuous. Rents are getting higher. Health care is getting higher. There's concerns with climate change. Some folks are concerned about discrimination and a living wage. And I feel that with my background as an activist, union leader, Iraq War veteran, decorated, I feel that I am a champion for everyday people. I am a part of everyday people. I'm a renter. And I feel that the voice of everyday people and the issues of everyday people need to be addressed. And I feel that the city council needs to be more proactive. And if elected, I plan to be that champion for everyday people here in Bellingham.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to thank the League for offering this event. I've been looking forward to it for quite some time. So I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. I have lived in Bellingham for over 30 years and Waukam County for over 40. I have been a longtime volunteer and advocate for the environment, our connectiveness of a community, and for housing. Part of the reason why some of my passion for our community started was because, as a young, single parent, I became homeless when I was a college student and was working two jobs. And I was basically victim of a really bad landlord situation, which is one of the reasons why, as time went on, I worked really hard in the community to make sure that we had the rental licensing inspection program. Because I didn't want what happened to me to happen to additional renters. As a neighborhood advocate, I worked with the York Board. And eventually, due to crime and human trafficking and drug dealing that was happening along the Samish Way, I, along with the late Harriet Spinel, started the Samish Way Coalition to address some of the difficulties that we were facing in the greater part of our community. Through that advocacy, we were able to eventually close the Aloha Motel. And I'm really proud to say that pretty soon, the Bellingham Housing Authority will be breaking ground soon on low-income housing. But it wasn't just enough to have low-income housing. As a neighborhood and eventually as a planning commission member, we worked really diligently to advocate for market-rate housing to be included. So I have years of experience with the York Neighborhood Board, the Shoreline Committee, the Planning Commission, in order to be able to have the tools and assets needed in order to address the upcoming needs.
Thank you. Okay, so here are some general questions for you. Candidate Anderson, you'll go first. What is your first priority if you're elected?
It's difficult to say first because some things are in tandem. We do need to deal with our homeless situation, which includes being able to provide drop-in shelter and more opportunities for people to be able to be housed. But with that, one of the initiatives I want to bring forward within my first year, if not sooner, is the eviction prevention program, which I have been envisioning with other community agencies and neighborhood leaders and community members. And basically, I want to create a situation that we can prevent people from becoming homeless because of one setback. Currently, when somebody gets displaced and becomes homeless, it's often that, it's at that point that they qualify for assistance. So we need to do a better job to interject before they actually become homeless, whether it's a short-term, no-interest-rate loan in order to help create where they can catch up on their payment.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
My top issue in this campaign is housing. I believe housing is a human right, and I fervently believe in the cause of social housing. If elected, within my first 30 days, I will create a task force based with local leaders who have been working on this issue diligently for years here in our beautiful community, and get to work quickly as far as short-term, long-term goals. I want to look at any property that the city currently is not utilizing, i.e., land, i.e., any buildings, any buildings that are not being used. I want to convert them over to social housing, which is public, tenant-operated, city-sponsored housing that is for all income levels. And I also want to look at housing cooperatives. I think housing is important.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
Challenge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Throughout the time that we have been discussing issues, socialist housing or housing for individuals has been coming up quite a bit. And I would like to know very specific means on your strategy for how this is going to be financed at the city government level. I'd like to learn more about that.
Sure. Ultimately, there's a plethora of ways we can go about it. We can either do it via a bond. We can look at funding that exists at the state level. We can look at potential new taxes for high earners in our community and also big-box businesses. There are a variety of ways that we can address it. I think that we need the tenacity and the movement to push this forward. There's a legitimate crisis going on, and people need relief. People are suffering. People are becoming more homeless. And I feel that if elected, that's what I will be focusing on.
Thank you. Okay, back to candidate Suarez. What city in America do you look to as a model of how to accomplish something that you would like to see happen in our city?
An excellent question. One model, well, one city that I really admire is Berkeley, California. They've been spearheading cooperative movement, which is very fascinating and I'm in support of. That's one of the planks on my platform for workers' rights. I believe that it's important for everyday people, working-class people, which we're the majority, to have the ability to collectively band together and create local businesses, you know, so we can address issues like the food desert in our community, co-ops that are grocery stores, whatever. We can do a lot of different things. But I think that co-ops is the future. And I want the city to incentivize cooperatives. And I would be looking to the Berkeley model in how to make that a reality here in Bellingham.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What city in America do you look to as a model of how to accomplish something that you would like to see happen in Bellingham?
Actually, Bellingham. I think we can look outside of our community and see good practices. And it is perfectly viable to borrow some of the best aspects. But there's no other community that is as unique as Bellingham itself. And I think we need to analyze what we're doing really well and where our shortcomings are, and then address that. We have done incredible things in our community, from greenways to the low-income housing levy, to the transportation. We're an award-winning city for a lot of our initiatives. And so I think we need to look inward and see what has been successful and why. And that's because of the community engagement. To look at another city and say, "We should do exactly this," there's far too many variables that it would be very difficult to reproduce. We need to borrow, but I don't think we need to duplicate. We need to continue on the pathway of what's successful in Bellingham.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson. What are the issues you are hearing about or seeing that are problems for the working class in Bellingham? And what will you do specifically to address these problems?
So there are quite a few issues, but there's also a lot of opportunity. I think first is, you know, we talk about a living wage, a livable wage. And truly, $15 an hour is not a livable wage, but it's better than what we have. And I think we need to work as a city and also with our partners in the county to have a baseline of a $15 an hour wage. But we also need to make sure that we're bringing in job opportunities by strengthening our infrastructure and also being able to take a look at other opportunities for people to be able to have an opportunity for homeownership. The middle class, really, our only wealth development for the majority of us is the opportunity to purchase a house and develop the equity in there so that we have a little bit of personal wealth. And I'm really excited about some of the changes that has happened at the legislation that has changed rules on liability for condo buildings. So I'm hoping to work with the development industry to create more condo opportunities for first-time homebuyers.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
Well, one, my candidate and I differentiate ourselves because we have different worldviews. I would say that social housing would be a top issue. Additionally, public fiber. Additionally, public childcare. You have no idea how many people have expressed to me how much it costs for them each month just for childcare that comes out of their paychecks. And I think that the city has an obligation to alleviate that in providing that service. And it can be a city-sponsored service. So additionally, I want to promote unions. I think a Bellingham Green New Deal is very important. It's going to bring green jobs here locally, good-paying green jobs. And it's going to address the issue with climate change.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson. No, I'm sorry. Candidate Suarez, sorry. What experience in local governance have you had? And how has that prepared you for city council?
Well, I'm a first-time candidate, so I don't have any experience in city government. But I do have a lot of experience as an activist. I am a decorated Iraq War veteran. I received their Purple Heart. When we went into combat in Iraq, I also saved lives in Iraq. I was a medic. And leaving the military, I moved to Seattle, and I co-founded the Seattle Iraq Veterans Against the War. We fought against that illegal occupation, as well as my involvement with LGBTQ rights. I'm an ultimately gay and proud man. And so as far as my experience, it would be that. I want to be the collective voice of all the different movements here in Bellingham. And it would be an extension of the work that I have been doing for 10-plus years.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
I have extensive experience directly with our city government and state. I work at Waukam Community College. And through that, I've had the opportunity to do work within the jail for education. I also was on a state committee for bringing about changes to the GED and adult education. So I was on an advisory there. I have been involved with the York Neighborhood Association for over 10 years, creating connectivity. We also redid our neighborhood plan, which identified opportunities for infill and affordable housing. I've been on the Shoreline Committee, so I've worked on environmental issues impacting our waterfront and our streams. I currently am on the Planning Commission. And I've worked from our comprehensive plan all the way down to what kind of signage is allowed. I helped start the Samish Way Coalition, which brought the end to the drug dealing and human trafficking that was plaguing an area of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson. What do you think are the city's three biggest financial challenges now and in the next 10 years?
So one of them is going to be growth. And within growth, that's going to be the infrastructure, making sure that we have public cable, that we have enough human infrastructure as we go into the UGA, not the UGA, but the annexation. Talking with the Bellingham Police, it takes up to a year to train people adequately. And we haven't started that hiring process in order to have the services needed. Being able to provide transportation access, but also housing. So we have put a lot of investment in our urban villages. And we need to continue to do that so we have the opportunity to create density that is good for the environment because it doesn't involve sprawl. But we also can centralize our services, which economically is very important. Another area that we need to really work on is our design standards so that we can bring in more green aspects to our city. And so with that, we can actually work towards our climate situation.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
Financial challenges would be, we need to, the city needs to have a proactive stance on alleviating the housing crisis. So we need to address that, as well as transportation. One of the things that I want to do is make transportation free at the point of service, which that model has been done in Corvallis. And that's actually has increased ridership, which is something that we want, as well as part of the Green New Deal, addressing any sort of new buildings that we create, that they're up to standard as far as lead standards and net-zero carbon emissions. We have a lot of work to do, but there has been good work that has been done. But we need to move forward in a bolder way.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez. Does the city have a role in ensuring that all residents have use of computers and Wi-Fi and the skills to effectively function in an online world? Please explain.
Absolutely. I feel that in order to compete in the 21st century, we need, as a city, to provide free internet or public utility internet. We need to bring that power back here at the lowest level, here at the municipal level, and take it away from these big corporations. So that's definitely something that I would be advocating for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Anderson.
Absolutely. We have a tremendous responsibility. Our current, our future is going to be dependent on having availability to the internet, not only for education, but also for businesses. Within my first three months, I will be proposing a dig-one policy. It makes no sense that we're not doing it already. I also want to work towards public fiber. And I would use Anacortes as a good example. They got very creative by putting the fiber through their water line. And it's been very successful so that you can reduce the cost overall without having to dig up your roads. And I think we really have to work diligently with the state regarding 5G. It has no place in Bellingham. And even though we don't currently have the ability to change it, I'll be working very diligently with the state and the national government to eliminate 5G and the effects that it's going to have on our community.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson. What is the role of council members to help move the community forward on the big challenges ahead of us?
I think we have everything to do with it. When it comes to climate, when it comes to health, when it comes to people's personal rights to be part of a community and the connectiveness and grace that comes with people being able to achieve their best and highest, we are the facilitators of services, from public safety to assisting with education to growth. We are the liaison that partners between the state and businesses and community members. So it's really important that we always have a listening ear, an open mind, and be available for all stakeholders to come and work with us. There is no grievance too small or any situation too big that shouldn't be brought before your city council. And they should deal with it very respectfully and openly and be able to be supportive. The future of not just our community, but nationally, is going to be dependent on the leadership.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
City council has a huge role in our community. We should be representing the interests of the majority of the community, which are everyday people. And I would view it as an honor and a privilege if elected to the position. I consider myself a good listener. So I would be listening to my constituents, everyone. I would go to your meetings. I would listen, ask clarifying questions. Any sort of big move that I would be pushing for, I want your feedback. Because ultimately, none of the things that I will be advocating for, that I 100% passionately am for, will get through if I don't have the community's backing, your backing. And that's where I feel that I'm different. I'm a movement leader, and I want to amplify that, the justice.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez. If you were able to choose one new business to locate in Bellingham, which business would it be? And what would you say to convince that business to locate here?
That's a good question. One new business. What I would say is that I don't have a particular business in mind, but I would want to incentivize folks that existing businesses here in town that are focused on green technology. That's definitely something that I would be for. I know we have local businesses that are, create solar panels. And I think that that should be incentivized more. So I definitely would love to see that amplified in our community. So green businesses are the businesses that I would like to see here in town. But I don't have any specific ones.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
I'm so glad you asked this.
It was for you.
Thank you. Carbon extraction. I don't have enough time to explain it fully, but there's a startup company up in Vancouver, Canada, that is extracting CO2, carbon, from the air. And they're locking it up in pellets, which can either be recycled back into energy, creating a loop instead of adding additional carbon, or you can store it and utilize it into some other type of material. It is very promising how much they're being able to extract. It's a green job. It's not enough to go neutral with our carbon. We have to start looking at other areas that we can employ good living-wage jobs that are green technology, that are going to be extremely beneficial to our community, but also on an international level. I have a lot of hope for this project. And once I'm city council, I'm taking a field trip with a few people to Canada.
Candidate Anderson. What is your position on incarceration facilities for those convicted in the Bellingham courts?
So we obviously have a big problem with the jail. And one minute is not enough time to get into everything. I've been in the jail as an employee of the community college. Nobody should be housed there, and nobody should be working there. It is not a good facility. The jail facility needs to be in Bellingham. We shouldn't be transporting people from out in county to the courts in town. But we need to get creative. I like Seth Paul's conversation about using Bellingham and county property for the better of the community. So it'd be nice to have something situated close to the jail. But we also need to increase our funding for mental health and for drug addiction. We need to eliminate cash-bail bonds for low offenses because all it does is help marginalize people who are probably the most at risk, which is the people who are poor and people of color. So for the nonviolent offenses, I would like to make sure that we don't have a cash bail required, and we have diversion programs.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
I am against any sort of new jail, 100%. My philosophy is restorative justice. I think it's very important. I think that folks who get out of jail, it's important that there's some sort of transition program. Because unfortunately, when folks get out of jail, a lot of the services that they would rely on, that they were relying on when they were in jail, like mental health and housing, things of that nature, Maslow's needs, right, basic needs, aren't being met. And I feel that we can do better as far as expanding city-owned shelters. I feel that we can create a transition program for folks who have been incarcerated and are out. I don't think people should have a stigma for the rest of their lives.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez. What are you doing to expand the electorate?
It's a great question. From the beginning of this campaign, from the launch in May, we have been knocking on doors every weekend. And for the past couple of months, well, for the past month or so, we've been doing it every day. And every time we go knock on doors, we register voters. From the beginning, I've always said that the way that we were going to win this campaign was expanding the electorate, reaching out to folks that have checked out of the political process because their needs have not been met, their needs have not been heard. And so they've checked out. And I've been knocking on those doors. And I've been having excellent conversations with people. And people are hungry for bold, real change. And along that, I've been registering at least over 200 folks.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Similar, but a little bit different strategically. I have been campaigning to, and through that, encouraging people to register for vote. But a lot of times, a candidate, they will, when they do their door-bellling, they extrapolate who is the strongest in a political party, who's most likely to vote. And so you target those doors to try to convince them to vote for you. There's a little bit of that with my campaign, but I'm also focusing on people who did not vote in the last election. So trying to go out there and convince them that even though it's not a presidential election, local politics matters. So I'm trying to motivate people who are your rainy-day, you know, big-issue voters, and not necessarily the people who have consistency. Because we need to raise peoples looking at the local issues and how important that is. So focusing on the people who may not always be voting.
Thank you. We're going to talk about housing a little bit. Candidate Anderson, you're first. Rising rents are increasingly causing hardship with lower-income families and our elderly and disabled citizens on fixed incomes. Should the city consider rent stabilization? And do you have any other ideas?
So stabilization would be great. Unfortunately, we're a little bit hamstrung at the state level. We don't have the ability to do rent control. We can advocate for that, but we can see what's going on with Seattle, where they've tried to implement rent control, and it's going to be litigated. What we really need to do is work towards prevention, but also offering more funding to help with subsidizing the housing cost. One thing to also look at is an interesting task that the Culchon Land Trust is working with the auditor, or excuse me, the assessor. Because as home prices go up, your income doesn't go up. And so for some of these houses in the Culchon Land Trust, the cost of it is much more higher than what they could sell it for. the cost of it is much more higher than what they could sell it for. So, I would like to try to take a look if we have any creative means that people on a fixed income do not have to see their property tax go skyrocketing because of the cost of the value of the house.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
I am 100% for rent control, even though my hands are tied at the municipal level. Though, I would be using my position to advocate for rent control at the state level. As we know, it's unfortunately in our state law, and that needs to be changed. Aside from that, I am for what is called a just cause, which is something that the city can do immediately, basically stating that you cannot evict somebody out of their home without good cause. And I think that will help alleviate some of the homelessness that's happening with slum lords in our community. I think ultimately, what differentiates myself between me and my opponent is I want to get housing out of the private sector as much as possible because that's what's going to make it permanent, that's what's going to make it more affordable.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Suarez, what are your thoughts on the city amending ordinances to allow more tiny home communities throughout the city?
I am for that. I believe that we need to look at short-term, long-term plans. I like the Tiny Home Initiative. There have been, there's a model here in town that works. I think we need to look at that model. We need to look at folks who have been doing amazing work, like the Colson Land Trust, looking at housing cooperatives. Ultimately, housing is one of my top priorities. And we need to do something about it. We need to be more proactive. And if elected, I will be doing that. That would be a top priority for me.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
On the Planning Commission, I had the privilege to be able to work on that ordinance. It's not just tiny homes, but it's also safe parking and also safe tent communities. And so, we did pass something that went on to city council. And so, we do have an ordinance that allows for tiny homes along with safe parking and also tent communities. What we need to now do is really try to find more permanent locations for these to be able to be sited. When they are having to move every six months to one year, it's very disruptive. So, I think we can partner with some property owners and for-profit or nonprofit in order to try to secure locations, not on city property. But it's really a Band-Aid. It should only be a temporary solution. We really need to emphasize and put a lot of resources in making sure that these individuals and other individuals who find themselves becoming homeless get permanent safe housing.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson, what is your assessment of what action, of the actions the city has taken to reduce carbon emissions? And do you think the city's efforts are satisfactory? Or should we be doing something else?
It's a start. It's not adequate. It's going to be really hard for any community to say what they're doing is adequate. I think we need to expand upon the single-use disposable plastic and styrofoam, except for in situations where it is needed for someone with a disability. We need to look at where we can plant more trees because trees really is going to be a major solution to be able to deal with carbon. I like creative solutions where maybe those trees could be like walnut trees out in Birchwood, where we can use some of the open land to create groves, where we can lock up some of the carbon, but we could also provide a food source. We also need to look at the project that I was mentioning, carbon extraction. So, we need to go a little bit further than trying to come up with reduction or even net neutral. We need to actually be extracting it and having a positive change overall.
Thank you. Candidate Suarez.
I think Bellingham has been doing a great job as far as the environment is concerned. There are a lot of folks here. I think all of Bellingham cares a lot about the environment. That's one of the reasons why I moved to Washington State, was because I love the natural beauty here. I grew up in Miami, Florida, hot and humid, and too hot for me, though I miss the warm beaches. But as far as, you know, we can do better. I think that we can become a leader in green technology in Bellingham. I would, I wholeheartedly support and would implement the Climate Action Task Force recommendations. And ultimately, I want to hear feedback from the community to see how we can make Bellingham even greener than it is currently.
Candidate Suarez, what are two actions you're willing to take in the next six months to reduce your personal contribution to carbon emissions?
I would say that I can utilize, I should, I can walk more to work. I think that would be good. I don't, I don't live that far away from work, so I think walking more would be better for me, as well as probably eating less meat. I think meat is, it contributes to the issue, though I enjoy eating meat, but I think less would be good for me.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Throughout my life, and I've done actually quite a bit, I started recycling at Waukam Community College as a student. I worked very diligently to save old growth. I also worked diligently to prevent cyanide leaching ponds on the Nookzak River for gold extraction. On a personal level, I've been very dedicated to, we've gotten rid of red meat in my family. We eat vegetarian six nights a week. We also have gotten rid of single-plastic, like Saran Wrap baggies. We basically reuse and recycle as much as possible. And I just talked with a gentleman last night who is going to be building an electric bike for me. A lot of people are going to these new electric bikes, and unfortunately, there's a lot of companies that could go out of business, and you're not going to get parts. But he has a model where the back tire is a centrifuge, and it offers assist, and you can rebuild it and replace it and not throw it away. So, after the first of the year, my bike is being built.
Okay. Candidate Anderson, this is for you first. What tools can the city employ to address food insecurity as a consequence of densification and global warmth?
One, we cannot be moving out into our UGA. We've got to protect our farmlands. But I also think we need to start looking at some creative solutions within our city. As we grow and as climate migration happens, it's going to be real, and food security will be an issue. We have a lot of open space, and one of the things that I want to take a look at is working with our Parks Department. We have a lot of big, open parks, and we need them for recreation. But I would like to try to identify sections of parks that we can expand our community gardens. I'd also like to try to work with homeowners in the Birchwood area, where maybe they would be able to take a portion instead of pipe-stemming some of these large lots. If we can get a few of them together to be able to basically grant the property to be able to do sustainable, organic gardening for food production, and then work on getting like an open space where they have a property tax reduction for that contribution.
Candidate Suarez.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What tools can the city employ to address food insecurity as a consequence of densification and global warmth?
Thank you. I am for worker co-ops. I want to incentivize worker co-ops. I am also for community gardens. I want to incentivize community gardens. Ultimately, I want the power to rest with the people as much as possible. And I want to keep the money and the resources here in Bellingham as much as possible. So, that's why I am for incentivizing worker cooperatives because not only does that keep the money here locally, it empowers everyday people to be not only owners, but workers. And it cuts away that boss element because you become your own boss, and you're collectively organizing and providing a service, an important service to the community. So, I would say community gardens as well as cooperative grocery stores here in Bellingham.
Thank you. And this is your last question. We'll start with candidate Suarez. What would you do to increase the diversity of the city's workforce, particularly the police department?
I would look to see what is being done currently, like what are the practices that are in place? And seeing where we can improve. I think actively going to communities of color, going where marginalized groups are at. I think that's important. I think that we can be more proactive in that. And as far as the police department, I would say that more diversity is good. And I would love to have a conversation and to see how the training is going over there at the police department. But I am not for increasing the police presence here in Bellingham either. So, ultimately, we can do more in diversifying and making Bellingham more reflective of the actual community.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
And thank you again for that question. I think there's things that we can do. I've worked in hiring at the university and also the community college. And one of the things is how we do our assessment of individuals. At the community college, we for testing. We've gotten rid of national standardized testing because it's not a good indication of someone's true ability, their knowledge or skill. And employment hiring practices, it's a very similar philosophy. We have to take a look at the transferable skills, what unique aspects somebody brings, and what that value is. It's not always the highest scorer, or the fastest runner, or the strongest person who makes the best employee or police officer. So, we really have to take a look at our hiring practices very closely and make sure that we are not marginalizing any community. But I also think putting emphasis on, you know, we give points for people who are veterans, you know, for hiring. I would like to see that happen for people who speak a second language.
Thank you. And so now, we're going to move into our closing statements. Candidate Suarez, you going first.
Thank you very much, thank you so much for having me. It's been a pleasure. This is democracy in action, and it's just very beautiful. Bellingham, this is your opportunity to elect a completely brand-new city council and mayor. It's going to affect the direction of our beautiful city for years to come. I represent Bellingham, the new Bellingham. Bellingham has been changing, and we need more representation of people of color in Bellingham. I am a renter. I'm a union member. I am an Iraq War veteran. I'm an activist. I have been there fighting for everyday people for a long time. And whatever happens in this election, I'm still going to be out there because this is a movement. I'm part of a movement. We're all a part of this broader movement, and we can transform Bellingham for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
Thank you again for holding this forum. I greatly appreciate it. I think a good measurement of what type of leadership I bring is the community members, the unions, and the support of national organizations have for my campaign. I've been endorsed by the Waukam County Firefighters, IAF Local 106, Bellingham Police Guild, the Sierra Club, Washington Conservation Voters, Teamsters 231, UFCW 21, which is our largest retail union in Washington, ASME Local 1060, the Waukam Commercial Fishermen's Association, Waukam County Association of Realtors, NARAL Pro Choice, Alliance for Gun Responsibility, Washington State Federation of Democratic Women, National Women Political Caucus, the 47 Democrats, Waukam Democrat Women's Club, our local leaders, too.
That's probably the best I've heard. Thank you so much for joining us today. Let's give them a hand.